Good morning. I'd like to call the regularly scheduled Court of Selectmen meeting for Monday, September nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two to order. This meeting is being held in a hybrid fashion as is allowed by state statutes. First item of business, traditional Charlie, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag. And to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
John. We've got a couple of items to add to the agenda. And so there are actually.
Can we just make one motion?
Yes, well, let's make two because. Item number one is discuss to take possible action on the purchase for utility golf cart for the golf course. Is there a motion to add that as number four A? So. Let me try your mind, Second Federici.
Yeah, aye.
Those in the room. That motion carries. Then we have items. Two through eighteen here, so seventeen of them, and these are. These are either resignations or appointments to boards. Charles, is there a motion to add all those?
It's like that committee was pretty busy.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right, let me try your mind, Second Federici.
Aye.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I apologize. Just the timing, I mean, we got the agendas on Friday and these, I see the meeting. Was Thursday night, I guess, the fifteenth, and I guess I'm just wondering. A lot of these are reappointments and elevations. And were those, I'd like to know if those positions were on the list as open so that everybody else in town would have a chance to see that they were vacant. Just the timing is just so so short.
Well, traditionally, at the the end of each meeting, it's usually once a month, I should say. Tracy updates the the sheet and that gets passed the respective town committees as well as posted. And she's very diligent about it. So, and again, it doesn't show open, but the way the thing would show is listed is an individual, their terms start. Their number of terms that they're in, first or second, the term start date and the end date, so you can see that some of them are expired.
Got it. Okay, so that's available to everyone.
We've had this discussion before, I mean, as far as advertising and frankly, it's responsibility of the people that are seeking the thing. I mean, the town committee kind of take it and run with it, but as individuals who might be interested in it, they have to seek it out.
I agree.
Posted it's there, it's not hidden or anything, but it's.
There's been extensive discussion, at least on the Democratic Town Committee side, about. Making sure that these openings are publicized.
To our.
Within our group at least, and Thursday night was the DTC meeting, but prior to that was a nominating committee meeting, and prior to that is a nominating chair. Receiving applicants, so this is, it seems quick, but it's a longer process than, yeah.
Fairly formal process, really, for the DTC.
And I also want to mention that those who are not affiliated with a political party are free to apply directly to the selectmen's office, or that has happened. In fact, we have one of those. This morning, Mary Louise Gross came to the selectmen's office through a recommendation of somebody else who thought she'd be a wonderful member, and so they, she applied directly. And I think that's just continuing this tradition that the previous administration, Joe Maza, tried to encourage. You know, non-party affiliated participation, because at the time, unaffiliated voters still represented nearly a third, probably more than a third of the voters in town, so. Okay. Item number two, public forum. Oh, we didn't vote, that's right, yes, that's right, thank you. Let me try your mind, Second Federici.
Aye.
And those in the room.
Aye.
That motion carries. All right, item two, public forum, anyone wishing to address the board in public forum? Hearing none. Make sure I've got everybody. There we go. Everyone can see who else is on the video participants. There's no one wishing to address the board in public forum, we'll move on to item three, and that's approve the minutes of the September sixth, two thousand and twenty-two regular meeting. Is there a motion?
Several.
Second, comments, questions, changes, suggested changes, deletions? I had none. All right, let me try your minds, Second Federici.
Aye.
Those in the room.
Aye, aye.
All right, that motion carries. Item four, Finance Director, Mary Jane Malavie.
Good morning.
Welcome, Rachel.
Well, I would love to start with revenues.
Jeez. That's pretty traditional.
Well, I really love to start with revenues this meeting. So, as you can see, we are fifty-three point one percent collected as of the end of August, compared to forty point six this time last year. I have four items to bring to your attention. First, you'll see that the selectmen, you must have been out peddling something, but no. We had a very successful auction with GovDeals, a new company that we're working with for all of our surplus items, vehicles, equipment. Tables, chairs, every, everything that we might have, we had quite a few items, about a dozen items that we put out on GovDeals. I say we, it was Karen and the help of all the department heads, very successful, and so that's where this revenue was generated, and that's kind of like, you guys are like my catch-all. For anything that might come in, so.
I didn't follow up, were there any big items in there that, you know?
Oh, we had a couple, okay.
There were a couple of old Public Works vehicles and parking wreck mowers, that kind of thing that, which I think you've heard me say, but collecting dust over at the old Public Works facility. You know, this is every, every couple of years, my wife makes me clean out the basement, so this is, this is the same kind of thing, so.
Can we place an approximate dollar value on, you say productive, but?
Well, I mean, I could send you the whole list if you'd like.
No, just the ballpark total.
Well, it's, it's most of this thirteen thousand dollars, you know, so.
Is it purchased by other towns or private individuals or?
All of the above. The GovDeals is a company that I used at previous positions that I held, and it's an auction, it's like the eBay for government. They work with us, they do a lot of the work, they'll come and take the pictures, we give them a description of what it is, we'll let them know whether it works, whether it runs, what, you know, whether there's an engine in there or not. And, and it goes on, they, you have to be an approved bidder on their system, but it goes out to, you know, anybody, any of you, anyone could, could get on and, and become an approved bidder. And they do all the work, but it's very much like an eBay, you know, you go in, you bid, and you're told somebody beats your bid to go back in, you know, you do it again, and they do all the work, they collect the money, and send us a check.
If I'm not mistaken, we no longer have to do the post, post it in the paper that we're, that we're holding an auction.
Correct, yep, we have, that's in, it's in our, it's in our rules, yep.
Doing this, we don't have the issues of dollar amounts of disposing of equipment, and all that, this is just record.
Okay, cleaner, easier.
And. It is, I think Karen found it, you know, easy to work, easy to work with, and we, I know there, we learned some things, and, you know, we're gonna come up maybe like with a checklist of things we need to know about everything, because people were calling, but. It was the first time we used it, and it was successful for us.
Biggest challenge was finding title to some of the equipment.
It was sold.
Have to be registered as motor vehicles, so, but Karen's amazing, she's a sleuth, and she's, she gets it done, so.
Okay. The next item I'd like to bring your attention to is finance. We have, we have had an amazing July and August stiff through the state, which we have a majority of our funds in. Their interest rates have really come up, and we had a significant influx of funds that we were able to put there between ARPA money, other grants. Our aggressive tax collection, which you'll see is the next item, so we had a very, so I cannot wait to go to the Board of Finance tonight and tell them I almost met my budget already in the first, in the first two months. Things are really bouncing back, and again, you know, we had bond funds that came in, we had a significant amount of influx of money that we were able to invest, and it has worked out well for us. The next item is, of course, tax collection, almost fifty-six percent collected through the first two months of the year, we're only at forty-two last year. And so we've done very well there, and the last item I wanted to just draw your attention, and it's great, Ted is in the audience. The golf course, again, it had a very good summer, forty-seven percent collected of their revenue already, even, they were only thirty-five percent collected last year at this time, so great job done by the golf course. So, any questions on revenue? Those are just my real highlights.
No, I'm good, anybody?
No, great news.
Just one quick question.
Yep.
On fire, did we wind up having to give somebody money back, because you go, an actual month-to-date revenue is a hundred and ten thousand, and the year-to-date is a hundred and nine?
We had some, we did have some refunds. Yep. Insurance, yeah, insurance refunds.
All right, I'm good, everybody else? All right.
All right, on the expenditure side, we're about where we should be at a normal year this year, and we're at twenty-two point six percent expended, last year we were a little higher at twenty-four point two. I don't have too much to say, a lot, a lot of the differences, so we're, we're about seventeen percent through the year, some are a little higher, many of the departments have items that are due July one. So, you know, that, that makes a difference, like information systems, a lot of our subscriptions are due in July, so some of the departments have that same thing with insurance, that's why some of those are higher. I will note that debt retirement principle is already overdrawn, that's because we applied credits against that this year. Eighty-five thousand dollars in January, we'll be making our payment on the water, Mulberry Water Point lease, the water main lease. And once that is done, this budget will be overdrawn by that eighty-five thousand dollars, and at that time, I'll come to you in the Board of Finance and we'll make that transfer, but that's a budgeted overage, bringing in those credits that we receive through bonding. Unless you have too many other questions, I have a lot to say on expenditures, everybody's about where I expect them to be.
Sorry, the budget cycle, so.
Yep.
Anything further, any questions?
As far as the Mulberry situation, will you show the offsets of the? What do we call it, tax collection or whatever, to pay back?
You won't see it in these reports, and I can certainly give you that the water main is managed through its own separate fund, so.
Alert us if there are any issues.
Absolutely, we, I will tell you that we had a number of residents, I don't know how many, I'll say a dozen or more. Residents pay their loan, the amount, their assessment upfront, so the town did make a large one-time payment against principal last year to account for that. So, and so each year I'll be addressing that as people pay ahead, we make, we make that, we make that payment on the other end.
Situation like that where we had a substantial number. Pay up front, will that affect our annual payments going forward, because obviously they won't be making annual payments going forward?
Well, it doesn't affect our annual, our payments, because it's, it's very much like your mortgage, so you have a mortgage and your mortgage payment is the same every month, right? If you pay more in principal, it doesn't change your mortgage present.
That's what I'm asking.
The savings is at the end, so we have a twenty-year lease, we, we start to pay it off, maybe it, you know, it's, it's less that we have to pay in the future, but it's not gonna affect our yearly payment.
Yes, my question is, then seen as we have to continue to make the same payments, yes, it doesn't really matter, it just comes out of a fund, so it isn't as if there is a, you don't have a separate. Account set up, and my question was, if you had a separate account set up, would there be a shortfall in that account, because?
No, no, because I'm not paying more than I'm collecting.
Even though you're not collecting because of substantial number of people prepaid?
Right, but I've paid that upfront, so I've paid that upfront, so moving forward.
You use that on some payment to pay down.
Correct, to pay down.
So you're not, on a monthly basis, going forward, getting the same income that we anticipated?
Correct, correct.
That's my question, as we're not getting the same amount of income going forward on an annual basis, is, you know, because.
There won't be a shortfall in, in the fund, I mean, I didn't pay every penny. But it saves, it saves the town's footing bill for the, for the interest, and.
I mean, because of financial circumstances, it's all in our favor now, but things can change at any given point.
Just let me clarify that statement, the town is not paying the interest, so paying the interest on behalf of those who have benefited from the program.
Correct.
As we're collecting it, and there's a, whatever formula you're using for paying it now ahead of time, does include a portion of the interest.
Correct, correct.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that.
Thanks, yeah, I know what I'm talking, I know what I'm talking about. No, the taxpayers are not paying, right?
That was a little bit where I was coming from, because if that fund of the citizen's commitment. You know, ended up being short, you know, the town would obviously have to pitch in.
Correct.
So, that was my.
Correct.
What I was trying to express is, you know, is that fund or income in jeopardy?
It should not be, no.
All right. Nope, medical, I didn't see medical.
Yeah.
Did I miss it?
Is it not on here?
I did not see medical, yeah.
Oh, I apologize, I know it's on the Board of Finance meeting, so, I, I'll make sure, I'll make sure you get it. We had a very low month of claims in August, only five hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. I've had a couple of conversations with our consultant, Joe Spurgeon, and he is supposed to have a meeting Friday with Anthem to talk to them as to whether they're having a problem on their end, what the, yeah, what, you know, what the issue is, but we, we don't have an answer as to why it's, it's low. As low as it is, you know, I do, in a normal year, I do expect the first few months to be lower on our end, because the employees are paying their deductibles, this is a little lower than we really expected, so I hope to have. I might have more information before tonight if I hear from our consultant today, but I have been in communication with him, and we are trying to get some answers as to why.
You haven't had any issue, feedback from our employees that they're having issues?
No, no.
Matter of process?
No, it's, it's typically a delay in processing claims, that's, you know, usually, but.
Not enough that affects the individual.
No, yeah, no, 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 the, not, the claim's coming through to us, not the claims going out to the doctors, it's getting, getting to us. But of course, they, they are not behind in their fees, so we have paid their fees, that's not a problem. We do have one claimant that has hit the seventy-five thousand dollar limit at eighty, at eighty-two thousand already, it's one claimant, obviously. We, we haven't seen any advantage to that, because one, until they hit a hundred and fifty thousand, but one, in two months, one claimant already eighty-two thousand dollars. And if the claims are behind like they are, could include even more to that claimant. So, because of the low claims for the first two months, I am showing a surplus of six hundred and fifty-seven thousand, I don't expect that to hold.
Two things, one, as we get ready for budget season, I know you've already started, starting to talk about capital budgets already, the department heads. But the question comes up, and it's always too late to do anything about it in January and February, and that is the stop loss, and, you know. Whether we should continue with the stop loss, because we haven't hit the threshold, the, the, the industry threshold, which is what, if you get to seventy percent, you're.
Seventy percent is our.
You're pretty good, so if we could ask Joe Spurgeon to put together some kind of analysis and possible recommendation related to the stop loss, including some permutations that might have a lower or a higher. Stop loss limit, so if we could.
Yeah, I, I would expect that, but we'll be starting to have communications with him, or meetings with them, with the, and with the Board of Ed, because our intent was to go out to a full RFP. So that will be starting sooner rather than later, and the stop loss would all be part of that.
Right, but I think the, the, the larger main discussion is, do we leave it at the current limits, or do we adjust it based on, you know, our experience level, so we'll look where past comes.
And maybe we can bid it out differently as well with different thresholds, so.
Okay, anything else from Andrew?
And I'll make sure you get the.
Medical.
Sorry.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, item four A, which is. Discuss to take possible action on the purchase of utility golf cart for the golf course, Ted, come on up.
Good morning. Good morning.
Just a little background here, please.
Yeah, basically, we have a nineteen ninety-six Yamaha golf cart, twenty-six years old, we've got many years of use out of it, and I brought it down to Public Works, Carl says, Ted, we have. Some major issues with it, and some of the major issues, we, we just can't get the parts to replace it, so that's why we're looking to purchase possibly a new cart. At Hawks Golf Vehicles, which is a club car. My main problem is I can't get parts for it, Carl, the Carl's been looking and trying to find it, and so it hasn't been in use for the last month, and that's why I'm here today.
By club car, is that a?
There's different, you can buy a Toro, a work cart, utility cart, you can buy like a John Deere, you can buy a club car, just the different varieties, or you can go like buy a mule, I mean, just.
Well, that's probably my question for what you're using it for, is a, it sounds like a club car is more of a personnel carrier versus a, a work machine?
Yes.
Are we buying the one that fits our purpose?
Correct, we're purchasing one that has, we have more use for it, as a utility vehicle.
Does that have the body on?
This has, basically has a body on the back of it, so we can put wood chips or wood into it, or whatever we need to.
It's like a mini, it's like a mini pickup truck.
Mini pickup truck, yeah, but.
So club cars actually have a brand or something?
Yes, that's the brand of it, Hawks Golf Vehicles, Cleveland, would probably be our supplier if we do purchase it.
And what is our, what's the price on it?
Twelve thousand, three hundred and fifty-nine dollars.
Any other questions?
Do we have this on?
I was just saying, we have the money cover on our list.
We'll work with MJ, it was not, this is an emergency purchase, so we'll work with MJ, typically there are in the capital account, we don't hit the number exactly, so there's usually some.
Weak prioritization.
Thank you, thank you. All right, so is there a motion to approve the purchase of the club cart, utility vehicle for golf course from Hawks in the amount of twelve thousand, three hundred and fifty-nine dollars?
I'll make the motion, Matt.
I'll second it.
But I have a question too, before we go on to the vote, one other question, I'm sorry, what, what is the warrant, what is the warranty that comes with this, and what is the expected life expectancy, and like, who, who does repairs once we're out of the warranty?
Public, Public Works.
Okay, so how long do we have under warranty?
I'm not sure what the warranty is, Ted.
I didn't get, I just got the price tag off it, and I mean, I have the whole estimate here, but there's not a.
Lou, is that gonna change your mind in terms of?
No, I'm just. No, no, I, I. I'd be interested to get it offline, though.
Yes, yes, that's, that's what I was gonna say, we'll get it offline if, unless it's not germane to your vote here.
So Lou, I have actually two, the two other carts, I do have our club cars, and one of them is twenty years old, the other one's ten years old, so just to tell you the, the lifespan of those, of those other.
Generally reliable and.
Pretty reliable, it's a reliable cart.
That helps, okay, good, thanks.
Public Works, okay, and then for the, I, I've lost the formula in my head, for twelve thousand dollars, do you have to get two other quotes as well?
I do have an occult from Toro, you know, Toro's is an extra two thousand dollars.
Okay.
And, and same thing with John Deere.
Okay, so you did get three quotes, and you're recommending.
Right, the cheapest one of that is actually the club car, and that's what I'm looking for.
Right.
You've raised an interesting point, we have two currently, and this is the third one.
Correct.
So under what circumstances are two not enough? How does that work?
Basically, I usually have three employees at the golf course, so everybody kind of has a vehicle, you know, to get things done, if one's down for a month or two, you know, you only have two vehicles, so. Right now, I've been using, utilizing two for the last month, takes more wear and tear.
Thank you.
All right, anything further? All right, let me try your minds, Second Federici.
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye. Yes.
Ted, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck. Wendy, is it, is it available immediately?
If they didn't sell it, don't know, but they did have it on stock.
Great, great.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Okay, item five, Board of Ed Director of Operations, Cliff Gurnham, we're here to discuss and take possible action on change order number three for the Guilford Lakes Boiler Project. Morning, Cliff.
Good morning, thanks for having me, so just to remind you, this project originally is supposed to kick off in two thousand and twenty-one. As a full replacement of both boilers at the Guilford Lake School, along with all the other associated pumps and equipment. Unfortunately, due to the fact that we couldn't get the equipment, you know, in a timely manner, much like a lot of projects right now, it was pushed off until the summer of two thousand and twenty-two. However, because we had lost one boiler at the school, we thought it was in our best interest to replace one boiler in the fall of twenty-one to make sure we got through the winter. So that's what we did, we tore out one boiler, put one boiler in, by doing that, however, though, it created a bunch of complications when we went to take out the second boiler and all the associated equipment. So, the way that boiler room is laid out, the exit. For the removal of boiler number two is essentially across the path of boiler number one, so we had to disassemble. A large section of boiler number one in order to get boiler number two out. So that's how this change order kind of developed, came about, so part of the change order is for that, and then part of the change order is for the relocation of a couple pumps. They were going to be hung from the ceiling, but based on the size, and for ease of access for maintenance, it made more sense to relocate them to the ground, so we did that, and then we also moved four expansion tanks. From where they are initially located to a new location in order to accommodate the pump, so there was a bunch of shifting that was done, really to improve. Maintenance and accessibility to the equipment, so. So that work is, is, a lot of it's underway now, so we're looking to award the change order that was reviewed by the Standing Building Committee. They recommended moving forward with the work with control air in the amount of twenty-five thousand, two hundred dollars.
All right, thank, thank you, Cliff, before we have discussions, your motion to approve. Second, let me try your mind, Second Federici.
Aye.
Oh, no, wait, we're gonna have a discussion first, I'm sorry, we're gonna have a discussion. Cliff, contingency on this project, this, is this within the parameters of the contingency that we had?
Yes, it is, yep.
Okay, and obviously, I think the project is funded through a bond referendum, and we still have, we have cap room left over on, on this project?
Yeah, we still have a balance of about one point four million, so I think it will cover this.
Okay.
John. What does phasing mean under not included?
Say it again, I didn't hear that, oh.
Under not included, it has a heading phasing.
I only speculate if we had to do additional changes, you know, it's kind of like the phasing that we did originally, of putting the boiler in before we actually tore out boiler number two. That's the only thing I could think of phasing there, you know, as far as timing goes with the install, which doesn't really matter, because we've done most of the work now, and we're just down to the last couple items.
Other questions? Cliff, this is, is this just for the heating, the boilers for heating, or is this?
Yes, the boiler, most of the work is, yes. Yes, uh the boiler in quite, uh most of the work is, yes, heating work. However, the overall project dealt with cooling pumps, heating pumps, cooling tower. Um expansion tanks, the whole nine yards. We basically gutted the boiler room and redid it.
Yeah, the reason I'm asking is that uh there there's recently become available in the state of Connecticut. Some federal funds for uh air quality, air could air, air conditioning, air quality.
Yes.
Obviously, uh we're probably not gonna be able to apply retroactively uh for some of those funds since this has already been approved. Have you looked at, have you looked at the availability of getting some of those funds?
Uh I'm in the process of doing that, uh because I have heard mixed uh, you know, comments of whether or not you can actually retroactively. Uh go back and get funding for some of the projects, so. Uh we're gonna look at it not just for this project, but obviously for uh several of the H E A C projects that we've done in the last year. Uh such as Cox and Guilford Lakes and Melissa Jones involved with.
Great.
And I assume timing and everything is under control with this?
Yeah, Cliff, it's satisfactory, satisfactory for getting it done?
We're buttoning it up now, so we'll have heat in the next about week, week and a half, yes.
Great. Okay, anything further?
This is already been done.
Uh a lot of this work has already been done Cliff?
Correct, uh much of it's been done, the um. Moving of the expansion tank still uh is yet to be done, uh but as far as the uh shifting out and. Putting in the new boilers, that work has all been done, yes, yep.
Anything further? All right, let me try your mind, Second Federici.
Aye.
Uh those in the room?
Aye.
Uh and motion carries, Cliff, thank you very much.
Thank you, have a great day.
You too. Item six. You're up, come on. Dockmaster Rob McClan is gonna uh ask us to consider take possible action on the award of bid number four dash twenty two twenty three. To go for Marina Launch Ramps.
Morning Rex.
Good morning, how are you?
Oh, thank you, we're finally here.
Yep. It took a while. Uh we had four bids and uh the highest was twice the amount of the low bid. Which the Marina has decided to go with. Or the Marina Commission anyway, uh decided to award the bid to Soundside Construction LLC out of Clinton. In the amount of twenty seven thousand four hundred and sixty dollars.
Um just wanna give a little historical perspective, these are for the, these are for the floating docks out by the launch ramp, right?
Yes.
And the reason we are uh uh doing this is the state actually uh had us take those out at one point.
Uh we had used a uh. Basically, it's an area that's used to moor the dinghies for all the people out on the mooring field. Um we've got fourteen moorings and only space for about seven dinghies, which means we have to find a space in the Marina for the rest of them. The uh, we had taken a excess finger pier. And stuck it on the end of our existing docks. And because seemed like the right thing to do, only deep thought differently. And uh made us remove it. And that was like three years ago and we've been in trying to get a permit to get the docks installed and extend them. Uh for about three years and it finally came to pass.
So I'm, the um cost of this, I wasn't quite sure how, the way you said it, you took the highest bid or the lowest?
Lowest bid.
I assumed that, but I just.
But we had a low bid of twenty seven four hundred and sixty and a high bid of fifty four thousand five seventy five.
Any idea why it was such, it was apples and apples?
Um it is apples to apples, I have no idea why the discrepancy.
There was mention in the um the meeting minutes about pilings, maybe you might need to look at the pilings or have a revision, it couldn't be to do with that, could it?
Um it was pointed out to me that the pilings that were spec'd may be a bit short. Uh so we may have to come up with an extra maybe two thousand dollars.
Any other questions?
Yeah, did you have any input on uh last week? I guess we approved or whatever D P with the new cut and everything, will that affect any of this or do you have any input on that that decision?
Um that's going to, if you're familiar with the area down there where the docks are and then there's an Osprey nest. Maybe a couple hundred yards upstream, uh the ditch there thinking about digging is halfway in between the two.
So it won't affect these stocks?
No, it will not.
Good question. All right, anything further?
Well, hey, well, we had a second.
Yeah.
Other than affecting this stock situation, do you have any other input, is sound like a good idea, will it help us with the sleuths?
Um I think it will help the sleuths, uh it's uh holding up a permit that we have from deep that don't have for Army Corps to fix the sleuths gates themselves. Uh that's another project we've been working on for three or four years now and just not getting any closer to fixing it.
I'm just thinking of the operation as I know, you know, the current is pretty strong.
Shouldn't affect the Marina uh at all, except maybe reduce the current through the sleuths gates, which would help out the commercial boats in a big way.
I think, I think the 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 ultimate point is that we're gonna be able to continue to operate the tide gates. Whereas if the other one isn't cut uh cut through, that new path isn't cut through, we may well lose the ability to use the tide gates.
Correct.
In totality, which would have an impact uh on the Marina and particularly the boners that are closest to where the velocity uh.
Right.
Can get pretty significant during uh their tide shifts, right? I just want, also want to remind everybody that the the funds for this are coming from the Marina's uh own fund account.
Yes.
Right, these are not taxpayer dollars. Okay, is there a motion to approve the um award uh for the contract is uh Soundside Construction LLC in the amount of twenty seven thousand four hundred and sixty dollars?
Yes, I'm.
Second, uh second?
Second.
Let me try your mind, Second Federici.
Aye.
Uh those in the room?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries, Rod, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good to put one project ahead. Item seven, Information Technology Analyst Tony Santorgangelo. And he's gonna, we're gonna discuss and take possible action on the purchase of security cameras for Town Hall, Tony, good morning.
Good morning. All right, you requested for me to go out and get a couple more quotes, which I did. Um you probably should have those in front of you.
We do.
Uh advanced alarms. Way out of, way out of whack, and these are all equal, all the products, oh, yeah, same thing. Um strategic security and mammoth security came in roughly the same. What you don't have for mammoth security isn't updated, which I could get you, um an updated quote, because they left something out. Uh it's now twenty four thousand eight one two. Instead of twenty thousand. Uh still equal to strategic, I would like to go with mammoth, um. They are new, but they were. Very responsive and when they came here, I I just felt something.
You expand on the fact that they left something out of here?
Um yeah, there was a a software licensing was incorrect.
How, how long has this mammoth been in business?
I think it's over ten, I looked them up, and I also think the city of New Haven uses them. So I contacted someone there and they said they've had good results with them, so that's kind of.
So they've been new to us, but they're not new.
They're not, they're they're newer, but.
Yeah, but they, they have.
Over ten years, yeah. It might have been eleven to be exact. Oh, so it is ten, okay.
So where are they located Tony?
Um I don't, uh let's see what their address is here, it says New Britain.
So I, I'm sure police and fire have cameras and things like that, did you contact them and who they're using?
Yeah, they. Uh not recently, the soft, the software and hardware is all the same. I believe. Both us and the P D have used advanced um strategic security. Before, I've used them before.
So the hardware and the software is the same with police and fire?
I don't know about police and fire, but what what I have, we we use um a Vigilon. At the community center, so I want to keep it the same, so I could monitor one piece of software, yeah.
That makes sense.
The installer.
What we're talking about is simply the vendor.
The vendor, that's it, yep, the vendor.
Okay. So we, this is, prior to this, we have not had security cameras at Town Hall.
No, so I'll give you the quick, uh so it would be the hallways at Town Hall. The back parking lot. And one at the counter at Town Hall South. Coming.
Oh, it is gonna be Town Hall South too?
Yeah, the the coming in to the counter, so you can see who's coming in. If something were to happen.
Yeah, unfortunately, we live in a time where not having this kind of security is something that you just can't.
I mean, knock on wood, nothing's ever happened, um but.
And you know, merely the mere fact that we're talking about this in a public arena suggests that the folks will eventually get to know that there 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 are cameras, right? And you know.
Yeah.
Now, do we have to put uh something up that says this building is uh being monitored or?
That I do, I don't think they have it at the community center. Uh I never.
I I don't think there's a sign at the library either.
I mean, you go to like a hospital, I've never seen this sign. I'm sure they have cameras.
Public Works has uh cameras out uh to throughout the yard.
With the equipment.
Yes.
To make sure.
They do use advanced alarms, that's what we, I used before, but they came in like. Almost double, I told them, I told them, I said, this is what I'm, this is where I'm at, they couldn't budge, so. Which I thought was odd.
Okay, so Tony, is the the numbers we have in front of us, uh twenty thousand four thirty three, is that still correct or is there a different number?
So mammoth, no, two four eight one two, twenty four thousand eight one two.
So we got it justified not taking the lowest bid and that is.
Well, strategic is twenty four thousand five hundred. Uh fairly close.
So it's just for about four hundred dollars only?
Yeah, yeah.
Don't we have to in the motion have a reason or something, we have to state something, I know we don't have to take those bid.
Yeah, we don't have.
Though we had to state something.
Um I don't, Pete, I don't, I don't know, Pete, you hear that? I think, I think we can award it based on recommendations for staff, uh that this is the preferred method.
Yeah.
I see so too.
All right.
I would, I would state the reason though.
Yeah. And that's uh preference of staff and uh uncomfortability uh with this vendor.
Okay.
Uh so is there a motion to that effect?
I'm moving.
Second.
Second.
Let me uh try your mind, Second Federici.
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye, aye.
Aye, thank you Tony.
All right, thank you.
Have a good day.
You too.
Okay, item eight, Town Engineer Janice Plaza. Uh item one, Senate Town Meeting to Consider Approval of the Conservation Easement. Guilford Land Conservation Trust on Townland at Chittenden Park and the West River Estuary for a mitigation project in compliance with. Army Corps of Engineers permits, and I'm not gonna read those, uh for Old Quarry Road, uh Chat Finch Island Road, Tunnels Point Road. And then to set a town meeting date of September twenty sixth, uh twenty twenty two at eight thirty AM for the uh easement and send it to the Planning and Zoning Commission for mandatory referral. Under Connecticut General Statutes eight dash twenty four. Talk about uh buttoning up, like that's been hanging around for a while, uh Janice, can you, let me give us a little more background?
Right, so um as you know, we received the the permits from Army Corps and we had a number of conditions of approval. Um and one of a, and they also approved our mitigation project, which uh we had reviewed briefly, I think in the past. Uh regarding um some wetlands creation at Chittenden Park as well as some uh wetlands uh restoration. In the estuary between uh Chittenden Park and um the roadway to uh the yacht club. Um and in total on the map uh that you should have received a copy, um there's about four, just over four acres of land. Uh within these multiple parcels the town owns that will um have uh various types of either restoration, create wetlands creation or um. Fragment, fragmenty's eradication, uh will be buttoning up the uh document with the volume and pages associated with those parcels. Which were shown on the map enclosed, um and uh this did go through the uh Parking Rec. Um Commission for their approval due to the impacts to um Chittenden Park and then. Uh we were required as part for the mitigation project to have a conservation easement held by a third party over these areas to be um. Uh part of the mitigation project and we had chose um the Guilford uh Land Conservation Trust and a little back and forth with them. To button up the language of uh both the conservation easement, the stewardship agreement and and maintenance agreement, um that's the document that you're. Are to hopefully approve.
Comments or questions? Oh, all right, is there a motion to approve the conservation easement?
Question?
Second.
Second.
Any further comments or questions? Anything going after this?
No.
I just wanted to be here to mark the occasion, make sure it didn't go off the rail.
Okay, does this mark the end of this situation?
Well, well, we still have to comply with the permits, uh which includes monitoring for ten plus years of some of the sites. Uh that were part of the road elevation projects, we have to get the mitigation project actually completed. Um so yeah, no, it's, but it it kind of resolves our. I I wouldn't say resolves, it 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 buttons up our regulatory permitting for the road elevation project. Yes, yes, I'm not sure if we'll hear any more from Army Corps, but I'm I'm hoping not.
We're not gonna ask.
We're not gonna ask, yes, and this is also in compliance with our previously approved and signed consent order with um deep. Cause they accepted this mitigation project as well for their, you know, consideration of approvals on these these road project permits.
And why exactly do we have to have a town meeting?
Uh easements is transfer of land, purchase or sale, granting of an easement, it is a trend that we're transferring. Uh rights to that property then.
Okay.
Okay, anything further? Let me try your mind, Second Federici.
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries, uh item two, Consider Approval of Stewardship and Maintenance Agreement relating to the Conservation Easement uh and appropriation. Twenty thousand be held by Guilford Land Conservation Trust in escrow fund to cover long-term stewardship costs and set forth an agreement contingent upon the approval at Town Meeting, is there a motion?
So.
Second.
Is there a reason why we're having it Monday versus just for following, you know, next quarter's like.
Uh it's just, it's timing to get this thing done and buttoned up.
Okay.
And the other, other item that needs.
One other item that's gonna require uh uh quick action, that's the the next item on our agenda. All right, uh no further questions? Try your mind, Second Federici.
Wait a second.
Aye.
Uh was there a second?
Was there a motion?
Yes.
Okay.
And motion and seconded by Charles.
Okay.
Okay.
Let's try that again, uh Second Federici.
Aye.
Now those in the room?
Aye.
Aye, uh that motion carries, Janice, thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
Okay, item nine, Kevin, come on up, discuss and take possible action to send it to a meeting, Planning and Zoning Commission. For mandatory referral under Connecticut General Statutes eight dash twenty four, the purchase of the twenty six point eight acre parcel of land on Poduck Run. Road located on Assessors Map ninety three lot eight, the sum of three hundred and twenty five thousand dollars and is at the town meeting for Monday, September twenty sixth. Like twenty two eighty three AM, Guilford Town Hall and by its. Uh this is uh property that we had had discussions um in executive session, as is allowed, uh because it involved negotiations. Um and this is a parcel of property that Kevin is gonna describe, it's sort of the hole in the donut in terms of Guilford Land Conservation Trust and the East River Preserve. Uh and um in full disclosure, it's owned by the Ballast Tracy family, uh the.
Chris and Andrew, right there.
Uh our former first luckman and longtime uh um board member, uh Carl Ballast Tracy, so Kevin.
Tracy, can you give me a co-host?
This one, I guess. Researching something else in between here, we go back down to the properties. So, um, this is the, um, parcel here, it's a twice.
It's not showing up.
Oops, may go back. Oh, actually, you probably don't check your screen controller.
Okay, share content.
Do you see Tracy, a map?
Yes.
I'm getting it.
You're getting it, but we're not giving it here, so let's. Here we go. I got it.
So that's the, the piece here, um, as Card indicated, the twenty-six point eight acre parcel. It's surrounded by town property and, um, land trust property. Let's see if this works. And I have to come back out of share for a second, or this back into. So you can see the East River Reserve on the bottom in the light green, um, land trust is in the darker green. The piece of property you're looking for is the Ballast Tracy piece, um, just south of east of Leaverman Road, which is a road off of Poduck Road on the east side of town. Um, as we're saying, this is the hole within our, uh, open space area on this side of town. Then blow out a little bit further on the map, you can see, um, large area continuing to contiguous open space along the, um, eastern side of the property or the town, which actually works its all the way up towards Timberlands. Up above it is Cockapose Forest. Connecticut Water Company property. And then we're up to the, um, um, Northwood's pieces with the Brumstec Ledges and above that is the, um, Braymore Preserve, so, um, big hole in the open space area on the east side of town, which, um, um, serves a, a, a great purpose in maintaining a large block of open, um, space for a wildlife corridor and, um, habitat. Uh, especially for larger, uh, mammals and stuff, which require larger areas of woodlands to, um, for their habitat there. So they indicated the twenty-six point eight acre piece, we are, um, working on, um, trying to obtain a grant through Connecticut D P Open Space Fund, um, um, to help supplement the, um, cost of this, um, project. Um, the grant is actually, has to be filed by the end of next week, the thirtieth. Um, so we're requesting town meeting, uh, next Monday, so we can continue our efforts to make, um, go after the grant.
This is a little off topic, but you're the, one of the people who kind of knows these things. There was a, a letter in the paper, um, sort of, um, encouraging Guilford to continue to, um, preserve open space, and I thought you told us once, or maybe you didn't, but I thought I knew that, uh, the percentage of, um, developed space versus open space that we had, Guilford had a lar, had a a large percentage of open space in relation to some other towns. Is that correct? The way you lump all the various, um.
Between land trusts and stuff, yeah, we do have a large amount of open space out there, and especially the regional water authority, uh, properties up there. Those are a hundred percent, the regional water is not a hundred percent locked down, they can be, depending on the watershed and stuff, they do sell off portions of their properties at town, depending on the, their, um, how they determine their protection of their water supply there. Um, but yeah, and actually some of the open space we have, or is not fully committed, even the land trust property, not fully committed, and, um, deeded open spaces. Uh, this one piece here would be, um, since it's going to be covered by a grant, there's going to be a, uh, if we get the grant, um, we'd have an easement on top of this, which prevents it from being a developed piece of property. Um, and having a large tract of open space, as Matt heard during the conference last week. Um, the guy you mentioned, fifty percent of the world should be open, protected land. I'm not sure we can achieve that here, but it's a high goal, um, but the state has a lower goal in their records.
Where are we at, at this point?
I have to look it up again, I don't want to give false numbers here, but for committed open space versus general open space area there, but.
Well, pardon.
I think we're probably close to the twenty percent here.
That, that's truly committed, like you would leave the water authority out of that.
Um, that's not true committed, that's just in the open space, that's, yeah, somebody could. Some of, some of those numbers were town pieces, especially up around like the, uh, we consider open space up around the Baldwin area, but those aren't truly locked in as protected open space.
In what, is that, that you said that somebody recommended fifty percent?
That was the presentation last Monday night at the.
High school there.
Doug Colomy, it's a really compelling, uh, story that he was telling.
Um, especially with, like you said, the carbon storage and, um, protection of global warming and stuff, there. The more protected open space, the better it is for the region.
Okay, thank you, sorry to get us off topic.
And one of the other reasons, you know, the, the, that parcel, uh, could potentially, uh, allow for buildings of some homes or home or homes, which would be.
Right.
You know, because they have access for it, even though it appears to be surrounded, right? Uh, they do have, uh, needed access across, uh, across some of that land to get.
Yeah, there's a town, by the way, pieces that are deeded going down to that.
All right, um, so, uh, do we have a motion on the table yet? I don't think so. Uh, so is there a motion to, uh, set the town meeting date for Monday, September twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two, at eight thirty AM? Guilford Town Hall, it'd be assumed for the, uh, purposes of, um, determining whether or not we will be, uh, purchasing this, uh, property.
I'll make the motion, Matt.
You got it, second?
Second.
Second, any further comments or questions? Let me try your mind, second Federici.
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Kevin, thank you very much.
Also, to make a motion for the Board of Selectmen to recommend, when, when we get to the town meeting side, we're acting on a recommendation. The town meeting is acting on a recommendation for the Board of Selectmen, I think, I always had this kind of.
Yeah, I think, I think the, the mere fact that we are recommending it to town meeting is our endorsement of, uh, this, uh, uh, this, this project and this purchase. Uh, had we decided not to, um, you know, we just, we wouldn't be, vote, amount, we'd recommend it. Pete, does that consist it there?
Yeah, I mean, it, the, the, uh, Board of Selectmen sets the town meeting, sometimes it's on request of a petition, for instance, and then you have to. But in situations like this, yeah, it's an implicit endorsement of what you're seeing by setting it.
Okay, why wouldn't we make it explicit? I mean, there could be a situation where we make a recommendation because we just want the town meeting to act on something.
Right.
So, I don't know, maybe something to think about for the future, but why not just be explicit?
Let's do it, let's do it right now. Is there a motion to, uh, have the Board of Selectmen support and endorse the purchase of this property, uh, for the purposes that have been discussed earlier?
I'll make the motion. I'll second it.
Uh, any, uh, further comments or questions? Let me try your mind, second Federici.
Sure, aye.
Uh, those in the room?
Aye.
All right, uh, item ten, appointments and resignations, uh, we might be here for a while.
Can't do this, like, get a little bit, this used to the green, we can't.
We could, we could certainly do that, um, so we have, I believe, um, uh, we have twenty-one, uh, either brand new appointments, reappointments, or resignations, this is, uh, there's one resignation. Um, so let's, let's do the resignation separately. Um, is there a motion to accept the resignation, Jennifer Murphy, from Youth and Family Services, with appreciation and regret? Is there a motion? Go in a second.
Second.
Let me try your mind, second Federici.
Aye.
Uh, the, those in the room? Aye.
Aye.
That motion carries, okay, for the balance, uh, of the, which would be the twenty others, uh, which are either reappointments, um, moving to, uh, brand new, brand new, uh, appointments, or moving from an alternate to a, uh, full member for the, uh, twenty that are listed, uh, on, on the board pack agenda and also, uh, my paper. Is there, is there a motion? I'll move that. Second.
Second, it, 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 we're not, we shouldn't say the names for the public, I mean?
Yeah, maybe read them.
I'm wondering whether, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I tell you what, we don't have to do individual votes, how's that?
Right, that's, but just include them in the thing, yeah.
Does that work?
Yes.
Okay. Let me clear my throat, I may be able to pull up. Uh, all right, uh, the motion includes, uh, moving Patrick Paletti, uh, Letty from alternate to regular member on the Youth and Family Services for term to begin October one, twenty twenty-two, expiring September thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. It also includes moving Jerry Reisman from alternate to regular member of Youth and Family Services for term to begin October one, twenty twenty-two, expire September thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. Uh, it also includes moving Mattin Cosgrove from alternate to regular member on the Guilford Lakes Golf Commission to fill a vacancy for term to expire September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Uh, it also includes moving Mark Warsman from an alternate to regular member of the zoning board of appeals to fill a vacancy for term to expire February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-six. Uh, an appointment of Cindy Gerstel to, as an alternate to the Youth and Family Services Board to fill a vacancy for term to begin October one, twenty twenty-two, and expire September thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. Uh, it also includes appointment of Patrick Paletti as an alternate to the zoning board of appeals to fill, uh, uh, a vacancy for a term to expire February twenty-eight, twenty twenty-three. Thank you, Mr. Patrick Paletti, that's the second time we've mentioned you in this, um, two boards. Uh, reappointment of Steve Renshie to the Youth and Family Services Board for term to expire September thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. Reappointment of Patrick Paletti to the Building Code Board of Appeals for term to expire October fifteenth, twenty twenty-six. Let me amend that, now that's the third committee, Mr. Paletti's, uh, uh, reappointment of Skylar Beaman to the Agricultural Commission for term to expire September twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-six. And reappointment of Michael Biersack to the Agricultural Commission for term to expire September twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-six. Reappointment of Peter Sharland to the Cable Advisory, uh, Board for term to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. The reappointment of Josh Hirschman to the, uh, Board of Fire Commissioners for a new term to begin October seventeenth, twenty twenty-two, and expire October sixteenth, twenty twenty-six. The reappointment of Steve Cox to the Hazard Mitigation Commission for term to expire September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. And the reappointment of Kit Wilcox to the Hazard Mitigation Commission for term to expire September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Reappointment of Ken Garmen to the Green Committee for term to expire September thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, and the reappointment of Chris Lowen to the Pension Committee for, um, uh, OPEB Board for term to expire November thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. So, we have a motion, it's been seconded, and we've now acknowledged them individually, sue.
About the rest of the regulars.
Uh, the first, the first one.
I understand.
Yep. Act on the appointment of Mary Louise Gross to the Human Services Council, uh, includes, uh, the resignation, uh, of, well, we're going to have to do that separately, um. So that, so that's it for the appointments.
Okay.
All right, uh, any further comment or question?
Second question?
Yes.
Michael there for the, the commission there? Hasn't shown up for the past couple of years there, can hold him off for another meeting?
Uh, certainly, uh, so, um, let's, uh, let's reconsider Michael Biersack on, on staff's recommendation that we determine the level of it, the true level of interest to that individual.
Okay.
Does that make sense? Okay, uh, so we have those, uh, let me try your minds. Uh, second Federici.
With that clarification, aye.
Uh, and those in the room?
Aye.
That motion carries. Uh, is there a motion to, uh, accept the resignation of Mary Jo Kestner from the Safe Streets Task Force? Uh, I'll make that motion, uh, thank, uh, Mary Jo for her work on that commission, uh, and, and our appreciation and regret, and seconded. Uh, the same for, uh, Terma Feinberg, also in the Safe Streets Task Force. Uh, and then, uh, Edwin Lombard from the Shelfits Commission, both of those also with appreciation and regret.
Yes, I second.
Yeah, all right, uh, let me try your minds. Second Federici?
Aye, with regret.
Those in the room?
Aye.
That motion carries. All right, uh, item eleven, act on request from the Guilford Keeping Society, place assigned, uh, on the green, advertising a Stony Creek Quarry Tour taking place, uh, October eighth, twenty twenty-two, uh, assigned placement nine twenty-four, uh, through ten eight. Uh, is there a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Uh, let me try your mind, second Federici.
Aye.
Uh, those in the room?
Aye.
That motion carries. Committee reports.
Um, I did mention this, I believe, the last meeting.
Kevin, are you going to follow up with Michael, or we'll have, uh, we'll have Trace pull up to follow up with.
Yeah, the commission too, I think there's somebody else that was interested, more active.
Okay.
I think I reported this at the last meeting, but, uh, tomorrow night, we will have a, a meeting of the Housing for Economic Development Plan just to get everybody kind of more up to speed about what's happening, uh, with our own Woodruff, uh, project and other projects in town to be followed in October by a general, um, meeting for everyone in town that will be hosted in person at the library on October eighteenth, and I can talk a little bit more about that in the future.
Um, I don't think there are any others, uh, correspondents? Old business? New business?
Yeah, I, I want to bring up, uh, you know, the lawsuit that's been filed against, uh, the Board of Ed, uh, I, I don't want to speak to the lawsuits, I know that.
Lou?
Yeah, thanks, good.
Uh, I, I know that's legal realm, and it's not for us to speak, but I want to speak to is, one of the articles, uh, that addressed it during the week, uh, it had brought up that there, there was outside money and the group, uh, I believe was quite, I don't have the article in front of me, but I believe the article was actually quoted that they wanted to use Guilford as an example in, in furthering, uh, their agenda, and, uh, this is a political action committee that's outside of Guilford, outside of Connecticut, I think. And I, I just want to make, uh, I don't know whether the Board of Selectmen, you know, how we would go about it, but I, I would like to express my concern that especially an outside organization wants to use Guilford to make some political point. And, uh, I assume that the Board of Ed is going to vigorously defend, uh, against this situation. But, uh, if, uh, if there's some way we could spell out that the Board of Selectmen uh, supports vigorous opposition to this, this type of thing, uh, I'd like to take this opportunity to do it. I, I don't know specifically what the best way to do it, I, I know it's going to take some financial commitment, but, uh, I find that article very upsetting that, you know, all the work that we have done as a community, uh, you know, both on the town side and the Board of Ed side, to, to be used like this just, uh, isn't appropriate, and I would really want to, uh, express, uh, my support, and I assume this board's support, uh, for vigorous defense of the situation. And I, it's a PR campaign in my perspective, and I don't like it.
Charles, I share many of the same sentiments, uh, that probably, you know, all around the tables, uh, are, are, are in the same place. Uh, just in terms of practicality, um, we have, uh, this lawsuit will be defended primarily by our insurance carrier. We will have the opportunity to appoint, uh, separate counsel to sit as second chair. Um, I've had some discussions with some attorneys you would probably recognize, um, who have, at least one has indicated that be willing to take the case on pro bono. Uh, but clearly there may be other costs related to it, uh, to this, to the, to this, that I think we should be, as a, as a town and a board, prepared to fund adequately so that we can present the best defense, uh, as possible. Um, and, you know, whether that includes, you know, funds for, uh, outside investigatory work, or whatever in, in the legal, in the legal world.
I, I wouldn't even mind exploring, you know, a counter suit, I mean, you know, when I read that article, how about how this, uh, political action committee wanted to use Guilford. This political action committee wanted to use Guilford as an example and type of thing, I mean. I would even support, you know, a counter suit or some sort of, you know, further down the pike and waiting legal advice.
Right, yeah, I think I think we would have to wait, Lou, you know, there's. Way over my skis here once again, but. Are there, there are remedies to recover costs if a judge determines that a suit was a nuisance suit? You wanna talk to that a little bit?
I don't see Pete on the on the line, so I don't wanna, I don't wanna get out of line, but I I, in order to, that is a possibility. The claim was is ultimately determined to have been brought for an improper purpose. Other than, you know, what was stated in the face of the pleadings, in other words, you know, some ulterior motive, as Charles is alluding to. You know, you gotta win the case and then prove that there was no probable cause for them to bring that claim. And that it was brought with malice, there's a number of hoops that have to, as you might expect, the judge to jump through. That's like, you know, I haven't seen the pleadings, I haven't looked at this particular circumstance, but at the end of the day, that's a possibility. And and everyone should sort of proceed cautiously, I mean. Meaning the plaintiffs, okay, my my my. Thought about this is I saw the same article, I'm sure everybody did, you know, it's it's easy to hire, as Charles said, a lawyer without estate money and start hurling accusations, it's another thing entirely. Swear to the truth of of what people think happened and to endure a deposition. And to put people in a position of having to give sworn testimony. Based on the accusations that are made, I mean, there's a lot of consequences that will fall from this, and I'm just, my hope is that. The conclusion of the case and the the proceedings of the case, to the extent that that's, you know, not some violation of some private aspect of what happens, but certainly. Filing a lawsuit is a public event. And it's not just starting it, it's. You know, carrying it to its end and and, you know, I have not seen. Anything to suggest that what has been accused here. Is anything that could even remotely be likely by the administration, the school board. And any of the teachers and certainly Dr. Freeman, so. I'm just confident that they're gonna carry through to the end and and that will ultimately prevail, that's that's what I hope. That we see it through and we support them as much as we can.
Yeah, I mean, that's my perspective, but I don't wanna give these people an expanded soapbox and that type of thing, but. But I. I found it personally upsetting and, you know. After I got my anger under control. You know. I I just wanna get that on record that, you know, I I I would like to see it vigorously defended and any and all remedies, you know, investigating.
And I I also, I totally agree with what you're saying and I. It also came to my mind that when the article described that there was funding for that, for the position of the people filing the suit. I think we owe it to taxpayers to, as clearly as we can, show the ultimate cost at at our end, I realize we have, we pay and. We pay for an blanket insurance coverage, but there are gonna be expenses beyond that, we we know that, even if the insurance goes up because of it.
Even the, the expenses of time, I mean.
Yes, that's what I mean, the.
Board of Ed.
Time which translates to money, so. This is down the line, but I I just. No matter how people feel about this, I think they should understand that, okay, the money's coming for the one side from here, well, there's gotta be money coming for the other side and where where does that money come from? Comes from taxpayers.
Well, and it's just taking from time of running a a board of ed and a school system to be dragged through this for. PR purposes just drives you crazy.
All right, I think there's unity that we're gonna be supporting the Board of Education and the town at large.
Yes.
Regarding this. Okay, anything else? There's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. So.
A second.
Second. It's a non debatable motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Well done, everybody.
Good meeting.